All right. Whoa, that's louder than I imagined. Maybe more effective sound system in the other room. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. As you probably all know, I'm Scott Anderson, the city administrator for the city of Ocean Shores. The mayor cannot make it tonight. He has another commitment. But we are extremely pleased to have our partners here with our clinic and our hospital district, and some of our representatives from our hospital district in the audience. So I will turn this over to Tom Jensen of Harbor Regional Health.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it. Thanks for everybody coming. I appreciate your time. What I'll do now is just kind of introduce some of my team that will present with me. We'll start with Dr. Wong to my left, Chris Majors. Chris is PR. Dr. Wong's my chief medical officer. Elizabeth Chimperley is my executive director for all my outpatient clinics and physician services. So she'll be talking about the clinic. And then the closest to my right is one of my bosses, Commissioner Lynn Sinata. Lynn, why don't you go ahead and take it away?
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. Well, thank you all for coming here this evening and spending some time with us. This is the first show we're doing so far. And then, once we do this, they're going to take it out to the other districts and present as well. So it's been my honor to serve you since 2020. I was elected as your commissioner. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for y'all to be here, to ask questions, see us face to face, see what's going on, and all the exciting things are happening at the hospital. And I just was looking through things when I was preparing some notes for this, and I ran across something from 2019. And one of the questions I was asked when I was running for commissioner, it says, "What are your thoughts about expanding hospital district services in Ocean Shores?" And at the time, I said, "Improving care in rural areas, underserved areas, is a multifaceted issue. It's not solely about how to finance the facility. It's about having the workforce to staff the facility," which you know all about. "Recruitment and retention of primary care providers and other healthcare practitioners is a challenge for hospitals. So it'd be important for the hospital to work hand in hand with community leaders to address this issue." So one of the things we're most excited about for here is, fast forward to today, and working hand in hand with your council members, with your mayor, and with community members, and with the hospital. There's going to be a clinic here, as you all know, I'm sure you know. So that you'll learn more about tonight. But I thought that was interesting to hear that. But it has been a group project, and it's great to work with all of you. So thank you for being here. Thanks for having us. I'm going to turn it back over to Tom. Oh, one more thing. I wanted to recognize two other commissioners that are in the audience. We have John Shaw here in the front, and we have Chris Thomas right there in the second row. So thanks for coming to support us.
Thanks, Lynn. Appreciate it. And just so you know, Lynn is your representative. So if you do have questions or concerns in your district, Lynn would be the person that would answer them, or at least get ahold of me to answer them for you. Next slide. We'll talk just a little bit about services at the hospital, as well as the clinics already have. So it gives you kind of a broad base of what we already have and what we do. The slide, I apologize, is a little overwhelming when you first look at it. But there's actually two campuses that are of size. One is, of course, the hospital. And you can see all the services that the hospital has entailed. But if you look, a lot of people call it the old St. Joe or East Campus. But you can see that we also have services there. So wound services, rehab services. We have a cardiology clinic there, general surgery, family practice, lab. All of that stuff is there. And then you can see some of it actually is duplicated a little bit, because the main hospital has what I would call the largest... So the lab is much larger. And we provide those services mostly because at the main campus, because it's just bigger. As you can see down below, these are outpatient clinics that we possess. So we have one in, of course, Aberdeen. We also have one in Montesano, one in Hoquam, and of course, one in Westport, and soon to be one in Ocean Shores. Anybody have any questions about that? I would like to let you know that we'll talk a little bit later in the slideshow a little bit about some of the cardiac services that we have. When I first came here and started presenting, one of your citizens was adamant about having cardiac services at the hospital. And it took us a little while, and maybe some prodding from some of the ambulance services, because when we couldn't provide that cardiac services, you had to actually be ambulanced all the way to St. Pete's at the time. So now we can actually provide that service at the hospital. Next slide. I'm going to turn this over to Elizabeth Chimperley. Elizabeth?
So these are some of the services that we have at our Warren Medical Services Building and our clinic is there. We have closer. Closer, okay. So in the Warren Medical Services Building, we have Family Medicine and Pediatrics. That's one of our rural health clinics. We have welcomed Dr. Maggie May here in August of 2024. Okay. In addition to that, we have Ron Omen, Hannah Hanonan, and Greg Lucas, providing family medicine services on the third floor. We also have a nurse practitioner fellowship program. So they are nurse practitioners that are in their first year out of their education. They are in family medicine services also. That's Lisa Wen and Yijie Zhao, providing services.
We have pediatrics with Sean Brown, a nurse practitioner, and Dr. Wen in pediatrics. With, on the fourth floor, we have Dr. Wong, who sees services, provides services one day a week, and Dr. Kozloff, who's there three days a week. Our cardiology services are also located in the same location as internal medicine. That's with Dr. Kennedy and Ivy, the nurse practitioner there. In addition to that, that's not on the list there. We do, the cardiologists who provide the hospital-based services with vital solutions do see patients one day a week in cardiology, the cardiology clinic as well. That is Dr. McConnell and Dr. Shodri is the newest one there. And then we have our prop care clinic, which is providing walk-in services on the first floor of the Warren Services Building. And that is provided by routinely by Rachel Quat. Kim Patterson is there one day a week right now. And so they provide services Monday through Friday, and they are quite a busy service. The other services we have, their specialty-related services, our substance use disorder clinic is also an outpatient clinic. Right now, currently providing telehealth-related services to those patients needing therapy. And then we have urology clinic with Dr. Best and Marjorie Nunes. And then in our general surgery clinic, has services provided by Dr. Rowe, Dr. Gifford, and Dr. Kowalski. Outside of the Warren Services Building, we do have three other locations for primary care. That's in Montesano, Hoquam, and Westport. In Montesano, we have two nurse practitioners there, providing services in family medicine, Kirby and Mia. And then in Hoquam, we have family medicine and women's health services. So family medicine clinicians are Dr. Laura Halick, Dr. Strange, Dr. Tebalett, and Julie Day. And then for women's health services, we have Dr. Island and Dr. Nick Halick and Kim Iverson. And Westport is our newest location that opened in September of 2024. And Ron Omen is providing services out there two days a week in family medicine. And then our last outlined clinic is our orthopedic clinic. That is up by the hospital, and that is services provided by Dr. Trainby, Dr. Bajwa, and Rhian Murray, our physician's assistant. One thing I mentioned earlier was our nurse practitioner fellowship program. That has been a program in partnership with the University of Washington and Primera. Primera provided the University of Washington with a grant. And over the last five years, they have partnered with the University of Washington. The University of Washington has gone out to find partners in rural health communities where they can grow nurse practitioner and primary care services. So we have been working with them in having fellows at our location. We've had one, two, three, four, five. We're on fellow six and seven currently right now with Lisa and Yijie. Both Hannah and Greg were fellows in our program two years ago. So they stayed on with us. So this is an opportunity for us to work with and continue to help promote primary care services and these fellows in being confident in their practice. And so we are looking to continue this program on after the grant is over. That will be concluded in August, so. And then this is our Rachel Quat, who provides our prop care services. Currently, like I said, we're open Monday through Friday. And we are actually looking for space to expand and hire more clinicians to provide this much needed service in the community. So we do lots of upper respiratory issues. And with more space, we can provide, hopefully, more hours and more clinicians. And then this is a quick peek of our Westport clinic. That's one of our exam rooms there. Ron Omen is the clinician. We're currently open, as we started, just on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And for appointments at that location, they would contact, any patient would contact our call center, which is a local call center. They are employees to our organization and are actually located within our Warren Medical Services Building. So they are not an outsourced group. They are our own employees who know about our community and our providers and our patients. And then this is the location of the family medicine clinic that we are working with the city to open here in Ocean Shores. So we are working with architects in the city to get all of those things squared away so we can provide services here to Ocean Shores. And we are also working with, to put a clinic of similar size in at Pacific Beach over by the fireball. Recruiting. That's me, too.
I was sorry. I was just going to try to... Well, I know it sounds awkward, because it sounds so loud here. But we're also streaming this on the radio, and so you do have to talk with a mic near you. Unfortunately, because they're not giving this back at all.
You got it. Also, I'd like to say, it looks like it would be quick and easy to take an existing building and turn it into a clinic. But what most people don't know is you have to... With the state as well as architects to make that happen. If that makes sense. So it does take time, as well as the federal government, to get certified. Okay, next slide. This is a recruiting slide on some of the things that we do at the hospital, just so everyone knows. The person on the screen is Julie Feller. Julie's our executive director of human resources. And there's a list of basically who works for her, just doing nothing but recruiting jobs for the hospital. And then what I'll do is let Elizabeth talk about the medical group recruiting and what she does on her side.
All right. So for the medical group, we have kind of two sides of recruiting, right? We have staff, and then we also have our clinicians. So in years past, we have utilized outside firms...
Firms to help with recruiting clinicians to the area. We've brought that service in-house. We hired Shelley Odell, who's been working in the healthcare field in a variety of different ways for many years and is local to the area. We utilize different ways of recruiting. So online job boards, our own website. We do direct recruiting through networking sites that are specific to physicians, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants. LinkedIn is also a nice way to recruit clinicians. We do have specified or specific web pages on our own website that talk about the benefits of living here in Grace Harbor and our hospital community. We also utilize things like our nurse practitioner fellowship program, and we do have a medical assistant apprenticeship program to help with recruiting. And we are also very pleased to have clinicians at our organization that like to teach and mentor. So we have the privilege of having third- and fourth-year medical students from Pacific Northwest University and Washington State University come to our hospital and clinics and do their rotations here. And the good thing with that is that we have several physicians and surgeons who have come on or that now work at our organization that were graduates of Pacific Northwest University. We don't need it.
All right. So like, go right there. So this is a picture of Shelley Odell, our recruiter. For clinician recruiting, what we're looking to recruit in this year and coming years is in pediatrics, another women's health provider, family medicine physicians for our Montesano clinic, internal medicine physician, family medicine nurse practitioners for our new clinics in Ocean Shores, Pacific Beach, out in Westport, so that we can add additional days and hours there. In our specialty clinics and hospital services, we're looking for another orthopedic surgeon, urologist, gastroenterologist, another general surgeon, anesthesia physicians, radiologists, hospitalists, and addiction medicine.
Thanks, Elizabeth. The one thing I will say is, with all the work that Elizabeth's done, we've also done some internal fellowship programs for MAs at the clinics. And so we do a lot of homegrown stuff. And as you saw on the slide before, even on the recruiting side, we work with the colleges, the local high schools, as well as getting kids an opportunity to take a look about healthcare and see if we can't get them recruited. Next slide. This just gives you an opportunity on the clinic side. As Elizabeth had the fellowship program, and as we've recruited more providers, you can see that the clinic visits from 23 to 24 have increased. And that's a direct focus on primary care. So I mean, we've spent time and energy in primary care. And one of the reasons why, if you drop down to see emergency room visits, they've increased, but not as much. And that's reason because of prompt care and primary care, if that makes sense. So we're trying to take care of the communities the best we can and try to get them well before they need to go to the emergency room. And that's what prompt care has done as well. The births, you can see, has increased. And I would say, you know, during the COVID times, things, hard to get in the hospital, hard to get anywhere, and we're starting to see births increase as well. It says 75% Medicaid. I will tell you, in the United States, Medicaid makes up probably 52% across the nation. So if you, just to give you an idea, that our hospital delivers, I wouldn't say substantial, but definitely more Medicaid children than the national average. Next slide. Okay, some of the stuff that we'll get into is all focused on the hospital. And then I'll talk a little bit about a different program. One, you can see charity care is slightly gone up from prior years, but bad debt has gone up from 23 to 24 by almost $4-plus million. It makes a huge difference. And if you look at margins from 23 to 24, you can see that we were in the black last year. And I'll talk just a little bit about that. And of course, the numbers aren't audited, and we're going through our audit at this point in time. But it just kind of gives you an idea, the difference between losing probably close to $7-plus million to making about $2.5 to $3 million. Okay, next slide. So payer mix is a big deal. And for some people, they'll, they will say, "I don't understand the difference." I will tell you that Medicaid and Medicare are straight government, and the other government would be LNI or VA or TRICARE, CHAMPUS, and then a commercial, and then self-pay. And you can see the majority of our business is government. So if you take the other government, Medicare, Medicaid, you'll see that we're all in the 80s. And most community hospitals don't look exactly like us. So we do a little bit more with the government than most. If you also look, you'll see the word Safety Net Assessment Program in the second paragraph. That's a program where the hospitals tax themselves, give the money to the state. The state then turns around, gives it to the federal government. The federal government basically pays back them for the Medicaid program. So that's been going on for the state probably since 2013. But not as much money was given to the state to do that. And last year was the first year that they tried to triple the amount to give the, to get more money back into the Medicaid program to cover more people, and in our case, increase reimbursement. Next slide. And just to give you a rough idea, Medicare pays us about $0.82 on the dollar. So cost me $1 to provide this service. Medicare pays me about $0.82. Medicaid pays me in the 60s. So if you think about buying a gallon of milk, if that makes sense, and they don't, you walk in and you basically walk out and don't pay the grocer what it costs on the little tag, you probably won't get too far out of the grocery store. I can tell you, it happens to us every day. So we don't like it, but that's, that's the way that it works. When the Medicaid program or Medicare program, in this case, we'll just talk about Medicaid, when the Medicaid program is in jeopardy anyway, and if you've been watching TV, listening to the radio, you've heard the words, "We're going to get the fraud out of Medicaid, and it's going to be all this money." Well, I will tell you, what they consider fraud and what fraud really is is very different. Fraud to them is, this is how the Medicaid program was set up. Any, any other use of the funds is fraud to them. And I will tell you, if you look on the slide where the bars are in February, without the program, because right now it's on hold by the federal government, we lost $400-plus thousand. If the program is reinstated, I would make $400,000, just to give you a swing. And the same goes in January and February, if you put the two together. If, if the program is not reinstated or put back, not put on pause, you can see the dollar amount difference is a huge swing for the organization. It's the difference for us being able to keep providing more services to our communities, not less. Does that make sense? Okay. And you can see the areas that are at risk in red. And then most of the reasons why is they are, their cost to the organization, and they either have high equipment costs, or they have higher Medicaid costs, meaning more, more people that we provide service to are in those two categories. Next slide. So in saying that, I want, I want you to know that these are your legislators. I'm not asking you to do anything today, but I am telling you, if you don't know who Patty Murray is, or Senator Patty Murray, or Senator Maria Cantwell, or Representative Emily Randall, please get to know them. Because they will listen to you when they start talking about Medicaid cuts. This is a really big deal to not just our hospital, but hospitals throughout the United States. We just have a lot more government. And as they start looking at government costs, they'll, those, those costs, we will not be able to, we will not be able to manage those costs. I can tell you that already. Because you saw the red and black bar chart. That just gives you an idea of the difference between that program and, and what we would have to end up having to subsidize. Next slide. These are your state legislators for the 24th district. Senator Mike Chapman, Representative Adam Bernbaum, brand-new Adam is eager to learn. And then, of course, Steve Theringer, who's been around the block several times, and all really outstanding people. But these are the people that, that we talked to to help facilitate at the federal level and also the local level. They understand that their hospitals not only are a driver in the economics, we also focus is to take care of patients, and that's really all we want to do. And on the 19th district is Senator Jeff Wilson, Representative Jim Walsh, and Joel McIntyre. I will tell you, these gentlemen are helpful as well. But don't, if you don't know them, please reach out, make sure that you have, they have an understanding that any Medicaid cuts will be bad for their hospitals. I hate to dwell on it that much, but it's really, really important. You'll also hear the words Safety Net Assessment, SNAP. That is a state program. That is not a federal program. The federal program is called Medicaid Direct Payment Program. And sometimes they'll just call it a direct payment program. Right now, they're on hold. They're not just hold for our hospital, they're hold for the whole state of Washington. They're also on hold for other states as well that use the direct payment program as well. So I don't want to get them mixed up. The SNAP program at the federal level is, is a food program for children, underserved. So I want people to have an understanding. That is what we call it at the state level. It is definitely not what's called at the federal level, so. And if you have questions, or you want to be involved at some point, let me know. And we'll be reaching out, of course, to the communities if things don't, if the funds are not released from the federal government. Okay, next slide. Growth. Dr. Wong.
Does this one work? Great. Maybe some good news, after all that wonderful, fun, government-cutting news. So as some of you, or maybe all of you, know that we have had the cath lab or the cardiac catheterization lab open at community hospital for about five years. And the primary goal was, of course, to save lives. Patients who are coming in with acute myocardial infarct or acute heart attack. If we could recognize it in the field, get them in the cath lab, get their arteries open, we're saving lives, we're saving heart muscle. And that's fantastic. However, there are a lot of patients who might need elective procedures, meaning that we know they have some coronary artery disease. They're having some symptoms. They can't walk very far without getting chest pain or short of breath. They can't walk up a set of stairs. They can't play with their grandkids. And their cardiologist says, "Hey, you need to have a diagnostic catheterization, and maybe you need a stent." But until recently, we did not get the certificate of need approved so that we could do that. And that happened last year. So it's very exciting for us that our patients don't have to go out of town. They can get their diagnostic catheterization here. They can get their stent here. Our, the cardiologists that staff our cath lab also provide other services. And as you can see, they're helping with pacemakers, stress testing, Holter monitors, et cetera, along with the staff that's there. The next slide shows what is a PCI or a percutaneous coronary intervention. Minimally invasive, so in, I would say, the dark ages of when I trained, most of the time, people went through the large artery in your groin, the femoral artery, to snake a catheter all the way up to your heart, go into one of your heart arteries and open it up. Nowadays, they can actually go into the artery in your arm on most folks. So a little bit less invasive. And they go in there with their catheter, find the blockage, blow it up with a little balloon and a stent, leave the stent in and pull it out. And it restores blood flow. Helps relieve all those symptoms. We hope that it extends people's lives as well, so. The other really exciting news at the hospital is we recently got a new MRI. I think you guys may have heard about that in the news. That's very exciting. It is faster, it's better, it's quieter. I think people would, I never really realized how loud those things were till I had to have one myself. And I literally thought the machine was going to explode or break while I was in there. And I think they just assumed that I'm a doctor, that I would know this. They, so they didn't tell me. But they tell me, they tell all the other patients that go in there that it's like you're inside a washing machine. And from what I, I haven't been in the new one, but I understand... And from what I, I haven't been in the new one, but I understand that this new one is much quieter and much faster. If you've ever had an MRI, you have to lay still for, it seems like an eternity. It's probably 20 or 30 minutes. And this one is able to do a faster scan. So if you have claustrophobia, or if you're worried that you can't lay down that long, that is fantastic news for our patients. So much easier. I see mostly elderly folks, and not that I'm quite old enough to retire, but as I get closer to that, I just know that sometimes you cannot lay on some hard surface for too long of a time without feeling a lot of pain or being able to move again afterwards. The other thing that's really cool about this new MRI is they have this, and I had to look this up, what is precise IQ engine and advanced clear IQ engine actually stand for? And they've used artificial intelligence now to be able to recreate the images. Because the MRI is kind of taking slices through you, and then the computer has to recreate them into an image so that the radiologist can read it. So it's using artificial intelligence to put those images together, so we have much clearer pictures, hopefully able to see even smaller things than what we could see before. And also, it takes away a lot of the, what they call noise. So the things that, if there's any artifact from taking the pictures, or artifact from maybe a little bit of motion from the patient, the, these two technologies can really reduce that. I believe our previous MRI, which is going out the door later this week, is like over 20 years old. So as our radiologist said, it's kind of like going from the super-old flip phone to one of these really fancy smartphones. So it's a, it's great. We've, we've had a little bit of a slow, you know, we had to install it. So I think we had some backlog, but I think we're pretty much caught up in getting people in pretty quickly. The next slide is another super exciting thing, though I think some of us will probably definitely feel the pains of this with change. But we are moving to a new electronic medical record, an EMR, or some people refer to as EHR, the contract signed. It does take close to a year to actually go from signing a contract, getting the software, implementing the whole thing, and then going live. The advantage is currently, we have two different electronic records. We have one in the hospital, we have one in the clinic. They sort of talk to each other, but the fact that our current Meditech is so ancient, it's very difficult for records to go between the two. So there's a lot of duplicate work that we, as physicians, have to do. I'm hoping that a new EHR will free my husband from the homework that he has to do every night before surgery. But those are some of the advantages of having one record. Better communication. Hopefully, it will allow us to kind of move into today's standards of patients having a more usable patient portal. Maybe technology that eventually will allow you to not only see when your appointments are, and get information about your appointment, like forms that need to be filled out ahead of time, or checking your insurance information, but even possibly scheduling. Because artificial intelligence is amazing right now, and it continues to go forward. I think it's also going to help us a lot with even the documentation of the visits. And so hopefully, in the future, if you're seeing one of the clinicians, their head's not buried in the computer anymore, hopefully they'll be able to look at you and talk to you and interact with you, and have AI be there to really help us do the documentation. I think it gives us an opportunity, not only for the clinical side, but the financial side, in regard to really capturing everything that's needed. Insurance companies have a lot of requirements. So it's not like the old days where the doctor kept your entire medical record on an index card. We have to prove to the insurance company that we did everything that we said we did. So that's all the documentation. That will hopefully improve finance, finances for the hospital if we can capture everything and get fewer denials. And it looks like with the future, especially with the requirements for health information exchanges, or HIEs, that this new electronic record will have a great integration with other HIEs. So if you're concerned that, well, I go see these specialists that are on Epic or whatnot, we will be able to get information with, through these HIEs, through Meditech Expanse. And it's all going to be on, hopefully, one page. So all I have to do is click in the right box, and it will appear for me. I'm praying.
I think the other thing that it will do is, since the outpatient clinics, as well as the hospital, will use the same EMR, that continuity of care from outpatient to inpatient is going to be huge for the clinicians and definitely help with the direct patient care.
Yeah. I mean, in the old days, as a internal medicine, I know that I used to admit my patients to the hospital, round on them, go to the clinic, round on them again in the afternoon. And nowadays, it is disjointed. We've got hospitalists, and we have people that are only in the outpatient. So having one record will really help. It'll help our hospitalists know what's going on the outpatient side, and it will really help us know what's going on with our patients when they're in the hospital. So that's, that's correct, Tom. That's a...
Yeah, it's exciting times.
Yep.
Next slide. Oh, Chris, this is you.
Am I, am I working?
Okay, great.
Excellent. So we noticed several years ago, I guess I, I started in late 2019, and around 2020 or so, we were getting a lot of feedback about the, the quality of our customer service. Some people were unsatisfied with the service that they were getting. So in the medical field, in hospitals and stuff, we call that patient experience. So those are the, the same things, more or less. And so we put together this group called the Patient Experience Work Group, which brought together people from all over, the, the hospital and the medical group and all over. And we built this thing called the Guide to Patient Experience. And the reason I'm talking about it is I led the group. And so we got all these people together. We put together a step-by-step guide for every one of our departments on how they are supposed to act and interact with patients. So there's no, like, confusion. If leadership changes, there, the, the pathways to good customer service don't change. We have it right there. It's all documented, so people can access it at any time. We have binders themselves that live in all of the departments, plus we have it available to everybody online. So, so through our Intranet. So it is there, and I think the next page really kind of tells the story. Just in the first year that we implemented it, we saw the very likely to recommend increase by two point, by 2%, and the not-so-likely-to-recommend decrease by 4%. So just in that first year, we, it wasn't even a full year, it was only nine months of implementation, we started seeing feedback from our surveys about the improved customer service. This is something that, so we, we launched in 2022 with this, with the patient experience here. And you can see, there's all kinds of information in it, even how to communicate with people, everything. So we, we tried to leave no stone unturned. And so that was in 2022, and this year, we're actually going to go back and revise it. We're going to go back, okay, what's working? Where do we still need improvement? Where can we continue to make our customer service better, so that when you come in, you have as good experience as possible? So when you match that with the new EMR and all this new technology, you're, you should see a significant difference in the way everything flows when you're at the hospital or the clinics. And it should make everybody's job easier. And if, if we're all on the same page and have a, this, you know, part of it is really trying to have a culture of positivity. And so when you come in, is being welcoming and making sure that you are cared for to the best of our ability. So my, my part's pretty short, but I just thought it was important to, we here, we listen, we know that there was a problem, we are working on it, we know we're not perfect yet, and we are continuing to work on it. So it's, thank you for your patience, thank you for your feedback. We have lots of different feedback mechanisms. You should see another survey coming out later this year. So if you get that link somewhere, please fill it out, let us know. Because we need your feedback to know where we're doing good and where we're not. So that's my job, is to listen and make sure that I relay that to the rest of the team, so we can keep doing what we're doing. And...
I just wanted to add, I did work with Chris on this project, and we didn't like just make these things up for what is the, what we should be doing in patient experience. We definitely used evidence-based resources. Some of them were actually from Press Ganey. I think some of them were from the IHI. So the group that worked on this really did some deep research to see what was out there that shows that it makes a difference for the patients and the experience that they have. I, I wanted to share, the next iteration is that we do want to incorporate, I think, what Tracy said today, patient, family...
Advisory council.
Advisory council, so that they can also assist us with looking at the patient experience and what other things that we need to make a change on in the future.
Yeah. So when we're ready to launch that, you'll see, we'll, we'll put some information out, and we'll be looking for people to participate in that. And basically, what that is, is bringing in, using both people from our organization and out in the public, and getting direct feedback, and working with them directly to try to figure out, you know, we, we get in our little silos, right? We're, we're here, we know what our work is. And so to have that outside perspective really helps. So we're, we're looking forward to that. So glad to have somebody to run that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to it is, though most of you probably don't know what Press Ganey is, when you exit one of our, or at least the inpatient facility and some of the outpatients, like the ED, they will send you a questionnaire. And that questionnaire is what we use to see how well we did with the community. So if you get one, please don't throw it away. Please fill it out. And if you have a good experience, tell us that, too. If you, if you don't have a good experience, we want to know. And there's definitely searching for comments, and we get those comments, and we use them for education to the staff. So...
And you should see, we, we just extended some of our work with Press Ganey, and they will be doing all of our outpatient procedures as well. So if you go to a clinic or a specialist or something like that, you'll get an email or a text or something like that. So if you get one of those surveys, it is really helpful for us, and we look at every one of them. So please do. And if there's something on there that's particularly bad, don't be surprised if you hear from our patient advocate and, or one of the managers to call you and, and check in and see what's going on. Okay, cool. All right. So we have a foundation gala coming up. And it's, the, the foundation is extremely valuable to our organization. They, they raise money, and as you can see here, they donated a lot of money for the MRI to make that happen for our community. So a lot of the things that, as you saw, operationally, we are challenged, our foundation backs us up. And they make sure that we can get the equipment that we need to, to, as best we can, to support our clinicians and our staff. And it's, we'd like to invite you. So you're welcome to come. And I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn, who is kind of heading the, the group.
So as you can see, it's September 19th. Mark your, mark your calendars. It'll be a Friday night at the Log Pavilion. And this year, we decided to go with diamonds, denim and diamonds. So I think that really opens it up to some creative use of some nice jeans and a sparkly shirt, and maybe some cowboy boots. And it's just going to be a casual, nice evening. And we will be putting more out on the airwaves about what it's going to be. We have dinner, there'll be silent auctions, there'll be live auctions. We've lined up David Quigg, in case you're all a fan of Davids. He'll be our emcee again this year. And he did a great job last year and the previous year. And we're looking to just keep supporting the hospital and raising the funds that we can help do better things for our community. So if you want to put that on your calendars, more details to come, Friday, September 19th.
The last thing regarding the foundation is we are actually seeking volunteer members of the foundation. So if you, you see here, there's a GHCHfoundation@GHcares.org, if you'd like to email us, if you're interested. You can also go to our website and go to the Foundation tab right along the top of our website, which is GHCHcares.org. If you're interested in participating in the foundation, we'd, we'd love some help.
I would just say that you don't have to go to the event to donate. So if you want to be a part of the foundation, or you want to give to the foundation, it, it's not specific to the going to an event. So, thank you. Want to, next slide? There you go. We'd like to turn it over to you to see if you had any questions from the audience. If we don't have the answer for it, I'm more than happy to, to get the information for you. I can't promise you I can answer everything, but I'll, I'll at least try, or one of my colleagues will try.
After you get the new EHR software, will you be using MyChart?
We will not. There are, so MyChart is very specific to Epic. And so if you don't use Epic, you don't have MyChart. So even if you use one of the others, like Cerner or something like that, we still wouldn't have MyChart. There are aggregating apps that you can link that would bring all of them together. But MyChart itself is very specific to Epic.
I would say that if you go to a specialist, and the specialist is struggling connecting that information, please let us know. Because that's part of the conversation, too, is, is making sure that the, the EMR at the hospital and services at the hospital will connect with your specialist. Because we don't have all the specialists.
Yeah, there's, this thing called interoperability. So they will be able to access your records the same way that they would if they were, well, there's one step in between. But they, any provider that you see outside of our organization will be able to see those records, and the same thing for us. If you go and see somebody in Olympia, we will also be able to, because of interoperability, be able to see your record now, without having to do a whole bunch of faxing and all of that sort of stuff. So it will be much faster and more streamlined.
Right. If you're, if they're on Epic, they'll be on an HIE, we'll be connected to an HIE as well. There's also another component of this new EHR, that if we have an agreement with the other organization, we will be able to see their chart. And so they would be able to see our EHR as well. So there's two different ways that we could access records, or others could access records from us.
Well, I got a question, but also the, I had a statement about Epic. Seems like wherever I go, they use Epic. So I wonder why you would veer away from that platform?
I, I can probably answer that. It's about four times as much money. Long-term, it's, 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 I want to say after four years, I think it, the difference between seven millions and, and almost like 17 million. So it's, it's cost-related, I assure you. If, if we could get Epic for, and I've talked to them, they don't normally even want to sell to a facility our size, but the, the, the cost is astronomical. Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've talked to MultiCare as well as, as, as well as Providence. And because we have so many services, each module costs more money. I know that sounds kind of strange, because one hospital is not the same as, as another hospital. So for a smaller hospital, it may not be a difference going to Epic. But for a hospital our size and all the services we provide, we have to pay on top of, not volume-based, just module-based. But there's no one up here that would not prefer it. But after having the conversations on what we can afford and trying to be good stewards, we just can't do it today. It may be, if things keep moving in the same direction, and what I mean by that is if we can keep making money, we might make the bridge step and then a transition to Epic. But at this point in time... But at this point in time, financially, the organization can't do it, though I have, wish we could.
Okay. So the original question I had was from my own experiences and a lot of people I've talked to, they've been really happy last few years with the hospital itself. And they're doing, you guys are doing a really good job up there. My exposure to what goes on in there was off the charts. So I was really happy with it. But seems like it kind of, most of the complaints I've heard come from the ER side of the business. And you kind of glossed over that. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear you address any of the problems you've had in ER.
Yeah, I would say that, and Chris mentioned it, we are now getting Press Ganey information associated to the emergency room and that information is going to the emergency room director. And I'll be the first to say, we've rotated a lot of leaders in that area. And we have Nicole, who's dynamite now. And I would be surprised if we keep having issues in the ED and we want to know about them. So if people are still struggling with the emergency room, we want to know. And, and I can tell you, because we've had some issues, she will call them personally. So it, it's a tough place, the emergency room of, people don't understand what goes on behind the scenes. I'll give you an example. I mean, we had 16 people, we could not either ship out or bring upstairs because we were full. So people don't always understand what's going on behind the doors. But that doesn't mean they shouldn't ask. And most days, if people want, I'm more than happy to have that conversation with them. So.
Tom, can I interject really quick?
Yeah.
I'm Brian, I'm the fire chief. Some of the issues, the same issues that Tom is talking about in the emergency room, they're facing recruitment retention issues, high turnover, just like everywhere else. But one of the biggest issues I see in, in the ED and I think in the majority of community hospitals is people using the ED for their primary care. So when they're going to the emergency room and they have an earache, I know it hurts. You know, I know it's uncomfortable, but the fact that you're waiting in the waiting room for an extended period of time is because they're so full and they have a lot more serious things to deal with. And I think we're seeing this nationwide where primary care has now fallen in the lap of a local community hospital, the fire department and the emergency room. And I think the benefit of having this walk-in clinic will, will reduce some of the, I'm not going to say inappropriate because there's no other choice. You don't have a primary care, you have something wrong, you want to get seen by a provider. But I think having this opportunity for Harbor Regional Health, the city of Ocean Shores and the fire department work together to reduce some of that lower acuity of, of patient care will be extremely beneficial for not only the city, but the hospital as well.
I wanted to get clarification on a couple of things. Earlier Elizabeth referred to the facility that's coming here to Ocean Shores as a family medicine clinic. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. It will be providing primary care services initially. If there is an opportunity for us to recruit enough clinicians, we do have space to provide additional services like a walk-in service. But ultimately, as a rural health clinic, the initial services we need to provide are primary care.
As opposed to urgent care or are they one and the same?
Urgent care is not the same. It's a different classification of services required.
But I will tell you that if a person doesn't know in a walk-in clinic, go. They will tell you where you need to go. That's the best part about a walk-in clinic. If they can't help you, they will tell you, you need to go to the emergency room. So there, that, once we get to a point where it will just take walk-ins and, and Elizabeth can tell you and you can see by the stats, my ED visits have almost stabilized because of that walk-in clinic. I think if the volume's here, you'll see, you'll see it as a walk-in. I hate to use the word urgent care because like Elizabeth said, it's billed differently. There's different expectations or different federal expectations. So we use the word prompt care and we talk about primary care. But you, you might not see very many differences between that and say, a more acute care service. So I know it sounds crazy, but.
Well, it's the terminology I think that's confusing.
I think it is.
Primary care and urgent care and walk-in clinic and family medicine. And I'm now unsure of what we're getting here.
I, I think that the, the best way to do that is if you, you want to come to the primary care clinic or even talk to Elizabeth, she can tell you exactly what it looks like. And you can provide all types of services in a primary care clinic. I mean, I have a, I'll call it a mini lab, but I don't, I don't know how to explain it any other way, but a very small laboratory in Hoqueme Clinic and it's a primary care clinic, but it still does laboratory services. If, if it grows, we'll provide some type of laboratory services. We'll, we'll be able to do a course of vaccines. And who knows, it may grow up into an opportunity for us to actually have imaging services. But just like Westport, we, we didn't know what, what would happen out there. So we're kind of walking before we run to see if the volume's there.
Okay. Another thing I was seeking some clarification on, the new EMR system that you're getting. Can it communicate with other hospitals or no regarding getting like records from Providence, for example?
Yes, it can, is the short answer. There's two, there, they have told us and I will definitely be very much involved in this whole project is that there are two different ways that we can. So if we have an agreement, say with Providence, then we would have a read-only access to their records and they would have a read-only access to ours.
Okay, perfect. And then finally, are you looking at grants or, or new levies, for example, for things like facilities upgrades?
So we look at grants all the time and I go to the Hill and beg for money and did this year as well. This is a really hard year for the state legislators, whether it's the Senate or the House. I usually ask for money in both. I don't know that we'll receive any only because of what's going on with all the budget cuts and everything else they're trying to get accomplished this year. But if we don't get something this year, we'll keep at it next year. But we do, I mean, the Murdock Foundation also helped us with the MRI. So we have foundation groups other than our own that actually help facilitate purchasing equipment.
All right. First of all, I do want to thank you. I've been into the prompt care and I have a physician there in the hospital and we have gotten excellent service. The crew is always smiling, they're very pleasant and I really do appreciate this. I just wondered if you could give us an update on our clinic here. And this isn't to put anything in writing and hold you to it. It's just, do you foresee any future problems that we should be thinking about regarding getting all of the permitting done on this building and moving forward with it? Thank you.
You know, and maybe I'll let Elizabeth talk a little bit about that.
So ultimately, I'm not, I'm not a person in construction. So whether or not permits go through or they take a little bit longer, I'm kind of out of, out of that realm of things. However, what I can tell you is we have been working with architects in the, the city of Ocean Shores to make sure that the drawings and the construction are what are required by the Department of Health to be able to provide healthcare services in this community at that location. So we are in, in the stages of that. The Department of Health requires what's called a construction review process. So they have to take all of the drawings and everything that we tell them that we are going to provide in these services and put them together and say, yes, you can do this here with those plans. So that's kind of the stage we're in right now. And then being able to do all of the construction and hire staff and get all of the equipment here and train them and open the doors. So that is a little process that, that takes time. And, and then following that, once we are open and able to see patients, we seek the next accreditation, so to speak, in accrediting it to be a rural health clinic and providing those services.
And, and I believe that process, that first process where we are right now, we're DOH, the Department of Health has those plans. It's a 75 day, they have up to 75 days to review this.
To review and respond, yes.
I'm wondering if you have this data easily available, but what's the mode or, or median for the patient experience?
I don't have an aggregated number.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
And my second question is, I understand that you have an association with the University of Washington and it has been really hard hit with the cuts, the federal cuts. Are we in any danger of use, of losing our training programs?
So the, the training program or my, or our agreement with the University of Washington was grant-based, as are a lot of, of their programs. That grant was not a federal grant. It was a grant provided to them by Primera, the insurance company. So that grant funding for the program in which they provided support in building a nurse practitioner fellowship program is ending. The, the funding is ending as of this year. So however, they are able to help us to get that program accredited prior to the end of the grant, if we so desire. So our desire is to try to obtain accreditation to continue the nurse practitioner fellowship program. However, we do not have to be accredited to continue to have a program like that. So our intent is to continue.
Hi. So I was raised here and not to bring up critiques, but it was like kind of fearful back when, when you'd go to Gray's Harbor Community Hospital. I had both of my children there. It was an incredible experience, but that was the only good experience that I'd had. Most recently, and I accredit you guys for what you've said to the public tonight on what you've done for that place specifically for the ER. My mom recently passed away in a tragic deal, but that cath lab, the same night, three people were brought in with heart issues. And I watched a whole family, watched their loved one have their life saved by that cath lab that you guys have. And even in our experience, no matter how horrifying it was, the staff, the hospital working on her, which I'm sure you guys have seen, that's quite the experience, was incredible. And I just want to say that to you because I, I know that hearing we're doing a better job is one thing, but I can specifically speak from a horrifying experience. You guys really upped the bar there and I just want to say thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. And we will share that with our emergency room staff and our, our new director, medical director of the emergency department. So we are very excited about this new medical director and his desire to listen to what the concerns are and really make some changes. So I'm, I'm hoping that we continue to see a positive change there.
I'll cut my list down to just two things here. First off, I have a recommendation for you possibly. I spent most of my adult life in big box store retail management. And when I got promoted from being a single store manager to a regional manager and then to a new store opening manager, I was selected by the management team at, at the corporate level to attend a three-day seminar that was hosted by the CEO of the Ritz Carlton Hotels. And it was a training seminar to teach us how to give excellent customer service, both to our, our employees and to our customers. And it's based around empowerment of your employees. I would highly recommend you look at that. It is probably the best management style I've ever come across in a life of management. It's outstanding. And then the other thing is, let me ask you a question first. Cause I think a, a number of us in here are still confused exactly what's coming here because I think a lot of us thought that it would be if I was on the beach and I stepped on a beer bottle and I cut my foot, I could go into your clinic and get my foot sutured. And now, now that's not what I'm thinking, I'm hearing anymore. Is that incorrect or correct?
So we will be providing primary care services. There may be some level of walk-in, but for, at first it will be by appointment only. Those kinds of services you're talking about would be more along the lines of an urgent care service. And we do not have at the time, at this time, the means to provide that level of service at this location.
Okay, I think that's going to be somewhat of a surprise to many people in this town, but thank you.
I was going to say, however, as we are seeing in Westport, you know, as any new clinic starts, the schedule's not completely full. So sometimes there are patients that will show up in Westport without an appointment. And if the clinician who is there has the ability, they will say, go ahead and put them in. So is that a walk-in service? It kind of is like a walk-in service. I mean, I think about it in my own practice. If one of my patients show up and if there's time or room in the schedule or if you are okay with double booking, you're going to get that person in urgently to take care of them. But it is, primary care is things like, I mean, I know it's confusing. Primary care encompasses anything that is considered family medicine. Family medicine's primary care. Internal medicine's primary care. Pediatrics is primary care. Obstetrics and gynecology is primary care. The primary care focus that we're going to have here will be family medicine. So family medicine we consider as like birth-to-death type of services for routine things. And many times your old-fashioned family medicine doctor would see you for you stepped on a bottle and your foot's bleeding and can they do something for you there? Or do they look at you and say, you need to go in the emergency department because I don't have the sutures and everything else needed or you need an x-ray and I can't do that? Or you have a sore throat and I have room, so I'm going to stick you in my schedule. Does that kind of answer the question?
Okay, so I would like to jump on not only that primary care walk-in scenario, but then an additional caveat to that in regards to prompt care. When I refer to a patient or excuse me, a friend's mother to prompt care, but she was not in the Harbor Regional Health system. So when she called to see if she could come, she was not permitted to do so. So when we go back to our local clinic coming up and whether it's going to be a primary care versus just a walk-in, I'm thinking now in terms of, we have so many visitors that come here who may not be within this system. So can you please address somehow? I'm already in your system, so I'm thinking I can make an appointment there if I need to. But I'm just wanting to get a little more clarification because I think a lot of us within this whole realm have been thinking this was more of a walk-in style clinic. And that was that. Thank you.
So prompt care, the original prompt care was more along the lines of an acute service that came about during COVID. So we were treating a lot of respiratory-related issues. And it was that in order to get, to receive those services, you had to be an already established patient of our organization or primary care clinics. In October of 2023, we switched it to be a walk-in clinic. No appoint, no previous establishment with the organization to have an appointment. So you can come in anytime we're open at this point to get an appointment. You do not have to already be an established patient of a primary care clinician within Harbor Regional Health. So that, that has since changed. In regards to, yes, the services we are initially starting here, primary care services by appointment is what we are starting with. So again, it doesn't mean that if I, if I have additional, if I have a large amount of services that are more walk-in based than primary care-based, it doesn't mean we won't switch to being that service. It doesn't also mean that we won't, if we can hire enough clinicians and staff, to provide a walk-in related services out here in that clinic location. to provide a walk-in related services out here in that clinic location.
So I'm trying to visualize the process. And as so many people have said, we were all under the impression that this was going to be more of a walk-in. I'm just trying to visualize the process. If I'm on the beach or at home or whatever, I have a severe laceration in my foot, it's going to need stitches and maybe surgery. And I call the REMS. They, you and they will have communicated, and they will have the criteria whether we go to this primary care or whether we're delivered to the hospital or wherever. But REMS will know where to take me. But in addition, what if my wife drives me to the primary care? And then what I'm assuming, what I think I'm hearing is you guys will say, no, we're not going to treat that, you have to go to Aberdeen. Do I understand this correctly?
I would say yes, although we wouldn't say we're not going to treat that. We would say, we don't have these things here or the expertise to be able to provide that service to you. And the best place for the acuity of your injury is the emergency room. So, but it doesn't mean that you can't stop there. But I don't believe EMS is going to drop patients off at our clinic. Yes, they're going to say, when they evaluate you, this is a emergency room visit. We take you to the most, the closest emergency room.
Thank you. You framed that much better than I did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the same thing happens in our prompt care now. If someone comes to the window and they say, I'm having chest pain, they're going to say, this is the wrong place. You need to go up to the emergency department. Or we call 911 for you, yes. I mean, there are certain conditions, even if you arrive to my clinic for an appointment and you have chest pain and shortness of breath and you're sweating profusely and you look really terrible, I'm going to call 911. I'm not going to put you in exam room and try to figure out what I need to do for you because it looks like you're having a heart attack.
I am confused, and I don't, I feel responsible because I said, build it and they will come. And what I feel like I just witnessed is a bait and switch. And the experience that I'm feeling right now is that Dr. Wong and Elizabeth, we've not talked to you, but we've talked to the board members, which you have board members sitting in the audience. And the way that this was offered is that it would be a walk-in clinic. And we had high hopes for it. And the jargon isn't, is not competing with me. And I don't know if you heard it, but I heard a gasp from the audience when we just heard the description. And I'm thinking that, number one, the amount of money that Ocean Shores has used from the ARPA funds, the city council, the mayor, and the people that have supported this, I don't think that we're on the same page. And the expectation was, help us get staff, help us get staff. Now I'm not even sure how many days it's going to be open. The fire department chief was just here and was talking about how much pressure is on the ambulance service because they don't have the clinic here. If we don't have that open, the facility that we thought we were getting from you, we don't have regular hours, if it is not going to be a walk-in, if I'm supposed to have a primary physician there, that is a totally different expectation. And I think your PR sucks because it does not relate to what we were told.
I want to go back to who can actually come into the clinic. You have to have an appointment. It's the only way you can get in. But you don't have to be a person in the system. People who aren't in the system, can they make an appointment and come in?
Making an appointment and establishing with the clinic and establishing with the organization.
Okay, because I'm, I'm not seeing a difference between this and C-MAR. It's the same thing as C-MAR. And, you know, like I said, everyone's saying, we were thinking it was a walk-in.
You know, I'm looking at, because we have a lot of tourists that come in and a lot of people from outside the state. When they come in and they get injured, they're expecting to get treated. I had an opportunity about two months ago where I had something. And everybody's got to understand, if they don't have the equipment over at our current urgent care, like our fire department, they have to transport you. I had a seven-inch laceration. They didn't have the ability to stitch me up or staple me, but what they did was clean the wound, pack it with dressings so that I don't bleed profusely from that place to the hospital. So there's a way of doing things. Now, I was sent over, well, I, about, I feel like I'm a prone person to get injured. But I was, I was in a facility where this wonderful flu A, I was attacked by it, but I wasn't here. I was in another facility outside of the state. What they did for me was confide me to a quarantine room. But when I left, they gave me a disc of my records so that I could take it here and give it to my PCP. So I'm wondering, do you have that kind of thing to do that? And they could be able to see what was done for me? What kind of medication was given to me? Because I'm a, according to Dr. Best, I'm a special patient. So anyway, that's what I was wanting to have done. Your, what you were asking for, for volunteers, are you also looking for people who manning, will be manning the front desk, the reception area, who will help with the beginning part of the insurance process? Because many of us, especially our visitors, will not have the same kind of insurance that we have at your facility or at your hospital. So I'm hoping that you will be prepared for that.
Yeah, we will have staff that will be front office staff, medical office assistant is what we call them, that would treat patients and register them and take their insurance. Ultimately, as an outpatient clinic, we are contracted with certain insurances. So if you are not contracted with our insurances, we may not be able to see you, or it may be an out-of-pocket, a greater out-of-pocket expense. So we are, again, not an emergency room. So certain criteria or regulations, we would, are not required to follow in an outpatient clinic.
I would also like to echo many of the other statements that we've had tonight. I worked with many of the people here in this room for quite a few years to, in the effort to get a clinic here. And we debated over, do we need an urgent care or a walk-in? Because, you know, semantics, there is a difference. Because we wanted to be able to accomplish different goals, such as taking the pressure off of our fire department. That is a, we're a very unique city. And our fire department works very, very hard at helping everyone they possibly can when it is needed. And I know Chief Ritter, he's not here right now, but he was earlier. And he has attended, I think, all of our gatherings regarding our efforts to get a clinic here. And repeatedly, he stated, this is such a huge, huge help for our city, our citizens, our tourists, and our fire department. Because often, they are not here. We have had houses burned down here because they are on runs to Aberdeen or Olympia, especially during COVID and beyond. Now that this has changed, we are all, I think, in shock and awe right now. What happened? And this was not what we had all wanted. Our mayor has called it a walk-in clinic as well. That's the impression that we have been under for several months. So what you are now proposing will do probably absolutely zero to help our city and our fire department. And we will be back under the same situation. Our tourists won't be able to get any help at all. And we had hoped that that would also provide an option for them. Like they were saying, you know, I step on the beach and I step on a broken bottle and I need, I need it to get fixed. And I don't need to go to the emergency room. I just need it cleaned out and some stitches. That was our goal here. And now I'm getting the opinion, the impression that it's going to be very much like C-MAR, which does most of us zero good because of their other setup. I have not worked in the medical field, I've worked in other fields. But, so now we're like, okay, we, you know, did the effort. We've got the ARPA funds together. We've got the building, we've got the perfect storm, so to speak, in a positive way. But now I feel like the ship is sinking, and we're, I think, very, very disappointed. And I don't know how to turn that around. But thank you very much for being here and listening. Thank you. I think my question is that I agree that we all felt that this was going to be an urgent care or some sort of walk-in clinic. What would it take to get us from where you are presenting tonight to something like that? And what, what does that cost? I mean, I've heard you say that there's not enough staff, not enough this, not enough that. But what does it really take to go to the next step or the next level? Is that an option to even be considered?
I don't want to speak too much to this as I'm not the CEO of the hospital. However, I'll reiterate, urgent care services are different services. They are attuned to an emergency room. And we don't have all of the things that we need in order to provide those services. We don't have all of the equipment, and we don't have all of the personnel, and we don't have that classification. Walk-in services are something, yes, we can get to. But that also depends upon the level of walk-in services we can provide and staffing. I have heard from, from others that the want is that we are open seven days a week for much more than a regular workday. And I can tell you right now, I do not have the personnel to provide that level of services either at the moment. So we have to take small steps to get to that point. And we have to see that we have the community utilization of the clinic to be, or demand to be open that period of time and to be able to staff to that, to that level of service.
Is there any possibility of sort of a hybrid system? Or obviously, we could have appointment-based scheduling, but people will be able to walk in off the street? And I know you said emergency care is, certain things, you know, what kinds of things would you be providing? Maybe we can start with there. What, would you be able to afford people who will walk in off the street?
In a walk-in situation?
Yeah.
We can, there can be some level of simple suturing, things like that. There can be all respiratory-related, like illnesses, ear infections, things like that.
I think that's exactly what people want to hear. If we can do that, then we can do.
We can provide those services in, in a walk-in capacity. That's what we do now at our, our prompt care location. And we provide those services also within primary care. So it's, it's not out of the realm of possibility. It's that I think there is some maybe miscommunication about what urgent care is and what walk-in services are and what primary care services are. So as Dr. Wong indicated, because we are providing primary care services doesn't mean we won't provide walk-in services in the sense of like, we have available appointments. So if somebody comes in and we can see them, then we would, we would see them, right? And as any clinic starts out, it rarely ever starts within a full schedule. So we have to build our practice. We have to be open for services and have people come. So it's, it's not like we would say, we're only scheduling appointments and you can't get in any other way. But it's in, I don't, I don't want to commit fully to something not knowing what the utilization will be in the community.
Okay, so I don't want to be the dead dog. But you need, we need to make sure we're being heard. And from the start, now, we all know the difference between walk-in and urgent care. And we knew we weren't going to get an urgent care clinic. That was no from the start. But then we were said, well, let's go with walk-in. And that's the way it's been presented to us for many, many months now. We were going to have a walk-in clinic here. Now, myself, my doctor's in McClery, and I love going there, and I love my doctor. But if I can have a good primary care here, I'm going to go to Ocean Shores for my primary care. So you're going to get business at primary care. But I would suggest going back to the drawing board and figure out a way to give us a primary care and then offer us walk-in at the same time. Because that's what we told we were going to get, and that's what we wanted. But also, our fire department, the way everybody here is already brought up, they were major players in convincing the community that we should do this because they felt they were going to reduce 50% of the travel to Aberdeen by being able to go into that clinic and have a walk-in facility there. They felt like the type of people they were servicing and taken care of could be taken care of in a basic walk-in clinic. So you're telling them, no. Well, they were major players in making this happen. And there's going to be a lot of rumbling in the community tomorrow.
I was going to say that a, because we call it primary care, does not preclude people from walking in. It can still happen. I think that we want to start small. Part of it is recruiting clinicians is very difficult. I would say that our most recent physician that joined us took me 32 years to create because she's my daughter. So it's kind of a joke, but it's true. I mean, I've been in this community for over 28 years, my husband and I, Dr. May, the orthopedic surgeon, we've been recruiting ever since we've been here. I have seen the community go from, we were at one time having 10 to 11 internal medicine physicians in Gray's Harbor, and now we have maybe two and a half. I mean, because Dr. Kozloff and I, neither of us work full-time. And then there's Dr. Gibbs. So we have two. We used to have almost 12. We probably had almost as many family medicine physicians. And in our organization, we have two family medicine physicians, Dr. Laura Halick and Dr. Maggie May. Oh, Dr. Strange's Tevalet, I always forget, they joined us. So four, we have four. But I think we used to have a dozen. Yes, we have a lot of nurse practitioners. They are not easy to recruit either. And so when you're saying, oh, we want seven-day-a-week service, that's more than one clinician. That's probably three or four clinicians. And I think we're lucky if we can recruit one or two a year. So that, I mean, unfortunately, that's the reality. If there's a way to get more people here to the community to say, hey, I want to set up a practice here and have walk-ins and do primary care, great, please bring them to us. Because it's not going to also be an easy practice to be out here by yourself. And I practiced out here in Ocean Shores for several years until I had my last child, and then it was not, we were not able to keep the clinic open. But it is very isolating as a professional to be in a clinic by yourself. But it, it is very isolating as a professional to be in a clinic by yourself and not to have backup. And it's very hard to put someone who's brand new, out of school, in a clinic like that. So it does take a special individual to be able to do that as well as doing walk-ins. I mean, it's one thing to know your schedule and say, oh, I know this person's coming in for diabetes and this person's coming in for hypertension. To suddenly open your door and anything can come in, it does take a special personality. So as much as we'd love to see the growth, I think to get a foot in the door and get established is one thing. And then from there, really trying to, um, react to what happens and then try to get the right people in the situation. I don't think a walk-in clinic with, uh, poor quality of care is going to be the answer that you want either.
All right. We understand all the difficulties in, in staffing and whatnot. My question is for Scott. How did this disconnect between what they're presenting and what we were expecting happen?
Well, I just found out about the, the appointment system just now. So I'm just as, um, I, I, I just, I just learned that myself, but that doesn't mean we can't. We just have to really look at that. We're going to have to look at how, because obviously that, that's what the community real need is. And we're going to have to have a talk about how that works. I mean, obviously you can see what our community wants.
Just a question and a, maybe an observation. I know we were talking about walk-ins. Is, are walk-in, walk-ins for lab work going to be accepted? Is that possible? So say if somebody has a, they have an appointment in Aberdeen and they have, uh, like some fasting labs order, but they can't because they're not fasting, they come in the next morning, is that something that's going to be available?
Not something at the opening that would be available. So that, that requires, uh, certain personnel and certain equipment and, um, things like that. So, um, you know, previously in years past, we did not have, uh, lab services at the Warren Services Building or in the Hoquiem Clinic. All lab draws needed to be done at the hospital. So those were services that we added, um, years, years later, based off of volume, um, at those locations. So it is a potential in the future, but at the, at the very beginning is, um, probably not going to be a service offered. There is some level of what we call point-of-care testing, so certain tests that we can do and get, uh, a result for at the clinic rapidly that we can do, but not, uh, full lab draw services.
So by point-of-care testing, you mean like a rapid flu, rapid COVID testing, things like that?
Yeah, like strep, uh, urine analysis, things like that.
Blood sugar.
Blood sugar, yes.
Okay. And then just one other, um, I know, um, I know, I know Tom a little bit, so we've, you know, from working in the medical field, I think the, I think part of the, when you're opening a new facility, the hesitation of opening it up totally free walk-in is, um, is human nature being what it is. Just, we'll use this July 4th as an example. July 4th is on a Friday, so human nature is what's going to happen is July 3rd at, say you're open till six o'clock. July 3rd at five o'clock, you're going to have a bunch of people walk in if walk-ins are available and that's just, that's going to, that's going to open up their staff to work extended hours and, and granted that, that happens sometimes in the medical field, but I think that's, that's maybe when you're opening a brand-new facility, there's still a lot of unknowns as far as staffing and, and services and all that, recruiting. And it's been mentioned, I think, several other times here by other people. I think doing almost, almost like a soft open, seeing how that goes and then, you know, if circumstances warrant, then, then, um, offering more, more services at a later time. But, um, that would be my, uh, maybe my take on, on maybe why, uh, you know, walk-in, walk-in, there's maybe a hesitation to, to offer that upfront.
Let's address the hours and days. We know that it can't be seven days a week. We understand that. How many days are we looking at? What hours and what days of the week? And can they be changed to go with our season? Can we be open Friday, Saturday, Sunday in the summertime when we have all of our tourists here, visitors coming? And then can it be moved back to during the weekday when it's off-season?
Of course, we can adjust schedules and days and hours associated to the need. I can tell you right now that we do not have set dates, uh, days of the week or hours for this clinic, so. At this time, yes, we, we have, we have not, we haven't gone down that road yet, essentially.
I have just one simple question for everybody on the board there. Everybody in this audience was under the impression for the last six months is going to be a walk-in clinic. We did not find out it was not going to be a walk-in clinic until you showed up tonight. Where did that disconnect come from? Why wasn't that communicated the very first time we ever heard about this? Why did it take six months for us to come to this meeting to find out what we thought, what we were told is totally wrong?
I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can't answer that. The difference between a, a primary care clinic and an urgent care clinic are very different, but a walk-in clinic looks just like or very similar to primary care. And what normally how we opened this is, we didn't open prompt care in Aberdeen until we had the volume. So without the volume, we won't know. And we'll probably start maybe two days a week, maybe three days a week. And as the volume grows, it will afford us to open and have more services. But if the volume's not there, this is the same conversation I've had before with people, the organization's losing money right now. So for us to throw a bunch of money and services in a location that we don't even know what the volume's going to look like, let us grow just like a seed or a tree. Just give us a little time to figure out what makes sense here and then we'll make sure it happens. But if we don't know, it won't work. Excuse me? So we have been talking to people with the city and we've been very clear what we are planning to do. And what we're talking about tonight is what we were planning and have been planning. So where the disconnect came from is really hard to say. We don't know. This is the conversation that we've been having with everybody from the city from the beginning.
Now, I, I will say that we knew it was not going to be an urgent care because we would not qualify. That would not be a classification that we could reach. I was aware of that, but I did not, until, honestly, until tonight, did not know that people could not walk into this. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to talk about this somehow. This may not be the place, but this, we're going to have to talk about it.
So I appreciate what Tom just said and, and we all hear, uh, the community's desire for a walk-in type of clinic. And I think some of us are probably confused by the semantics. What's the difference? You know, you guys are technical experts. You know exactly the definition between urgent care and walk-in and yada, yada, yada. What I wanted to say is I am very confident of your guys' you guys' ability to talk to those guys' abilities, Scott and the mayor. And I have been impressed as I sit here and listen to, to what your plans are and I appreciate it's going to take time to, to, you've got to crawl before you can walk. And I absolutely appreciate you've got to have the volume before you can start to allocate the money. So yes, I am a little bit disappointed that it's not going to open the doors as a walk-in, but I'm also very optimistic that as quickly as we, the community, can provide the numbers and you can see the reality, uh, uh, Scott is a, as a superb communicator, the mayor's a superb communicator, uh, and I look forward to seeing what evolves. And I quite frankly, willing to give this six months a year to let it evolve because I just know you can't, you can't jump out of the airplane until you learn how to parachute.
If, if maybe I can kind of split, find some, some common ground here. So obviously we know that there's going to be staffing issues at first. We don't know volume. There's a whole, most of the things we don't know. We know there's going to be probably much busier in the summer than it's going to be in the winter months. But if we could find a way, I don't know, even just to start, to say there will be maybe like, you know, two hours a day or three hours a day will be dedicated to this general walk-in, people who's got an ear infection, people who, you know, are, I mean, something just a, a certain period of time every day, two or three hours or something like that, that you can come in on a non-appointment basis. And then we take it from there and look. Um, and that, maybe that starts as only a few hours, uh, a day for only two or three days a week, but we start with that process. And I understand you can't look at everything. Uh, you don't have the resources for that. But the kinds of things that I think people in the community want to be able to not have to go all the way to Aberdeen and Hoquiem to address, if, if I'm understanding what people really want here.
So that when I spoke earlier, it wasn't a question. The question is, I think that there needs some dialogue and the board members that are, the hospital board members that are in this audience and on the table, I don't think that we were speaking French and you were speaking English earlier on. And what we were led to believe was completely different. And I think that Scott has, has offered some negotiation room. And what we expected tonight was to, to say, oh, we're not going to have to pay rent. We're having the, the building remodeled, not on the hospital dime. This is what we have been able to create for you to be able to operate. And what we are getting is a steak dinner on a garbage can lid. And it does not taste very good and it's not appealing. We expect that you would be able to negotiate and we thought tonight, we'd be hearing about what hours you would start off with, how many people you have been lining up to have work at that clinic. We were excited for this and it really does not appeal to what we were told before. Now, I don't want you to think that you're going to be tarred and feathered before you leave the door, but there needs to be some negotiation here and there needs to be a reckoning so that there's an understanding because what you presented, Elizabeth, you and Dr. Wong have a tremendous amount of information, tremendous. You were rattling stuff off. I couldn't keep up with you. But the disconnect is what you are offering for this community that has pulled together and made this happen. It's not just the hospital involved in this. And our expectations is that you would, we didn't expect seven days a week. We know that you need to build. But if you're telling me you're going to only do it four hours a day and you're going to high-grade the employees from this location and take them to the hospital, that's not going to help this grow either. And when you say that you're, we're expecting appointments, that we are a primary care, it doesn't matter what the definition is. Again, the disconnect for the audience of what we thought we were going to get is completely different. And Chris, I have to disagree with you. This is not the conversation that we've had and you weren't there at every one of those conversations. This is not what we expected. So what I'd like for you to do, and my request is, is that you go back to the drawing board, a short drawing board, and come up with an, uh, an agreeable situation for the community. If you build it, they will come. We will have more people here. But to tell us that it's going to be set up as a, a clinic where you have to have an appointment, that wasn't the, the, uh, diagram that we were, that we had in our mind. We knew that we weren't eligible for an urgent care, but we did expect a walk-in clinic and we did expect to be able to have labs done. We did expect that there was going to be equipment that would be coming. This isn't something I just dreamed up. This was in discussion and this was conversations. And Scott, thank you God for being here because, and being honest about this, because Scott, Scott represents us. So please, take this as an advisement.
Maybe Scott can help me out on this. Our ARPA funds, um, the balance is being used to get the construction done. And I'm not a grant writer. I don't know that end of how things work. Our, were our ARPA funds specifically requested and directed to a walk-in clinic when, at the end of last year? And our city council voted for a walk-in clinic, not a primary care clinic. I know those are maybe semantics. I don't know. But it's in black and white. It's in the minutes. You can watch the council meeting, the last one of last year. It was for a walk-in clinic, not ARPA. And I honor you for having a practice here, I'm sorry, don't remember your name, for a long time in Ocean Shores. Ocean Shores has probably at least doubled in population since you've been here to practice. It's astounding how this city has grown. And so what, what maybe practitioners were not able to support all those years ago, maybe it wouldn't be as hard now. There's a very robust population here and, and I can't remember the statistics, but it's either 40% or 60% of the patients at Summit Pacific come from Ocean Shores alone. And it's, it's a growing, growing area. And I'm glad that we finally were able to come to terms to get a clinic here, but something has happened. And when our city administrator as well was on the same page as the population, there's an issue here. It is not what we expected. It's not what the ARPA funds went for and it's not what our city council voted on. So I think, you know, some serious conversations need to take place using our ARPA funds and our building, that kind of thing, which we're grateful for. We're grateful for all of that. And I was not a fly on the wall when our mayor met, um, with, with you, sir. And, but I'm pretty sure it was a walk-in clinic that was discussed and not a primary care because the mayor has been very open about that to all of the citizens and we've discussed it many, many times of, gosh, that's, this is what this clinic will do for us. And I wish Chief Ritter was still here. I don't, you know, I know he has commitments as well. But doggone it, we were really hoping that that was going to be a relief for our, for our fire department and our city because when I go to town, to Aberdeen or Olympia, I tell you right now, every single time I'm on my way to those cities or back, there are one to all of our ambulances on that road. That right there demonstrates that we really need something here that's flexible. Thank you.
And Nancy, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to discuss the ARPA funds issue because we are actually just sidebar-ing on that very matter.
Um, to, to the city administrators' comments before, that's where I went into straight panic mode because we all know that I do the money here and the contracts, uh, together with the city administrator. And I was like, wait a second, what do the papers say? Because we, we talked walk-in clinic. The beautiful thing about the ARPA funds is it was specific to, uh, medical facility. It didn't, you didn't have to be specific because that was where my biggest panic was is, were we too specific? And now, and now we're out of line. But if I may just mildly de-escalate, everyone in this audience specifically knows our mayor. So, um, even meanwhile, like, oh, I don't think this is going to go over well. So, so take a pause. I totally was there. We all walked through this. We all heard walk-in clinic. It's been made very clear that verbiage is, is different, um, based on history and professions and everything. Give it just the moment. You know Frank, you know Scott are going to go and have these conversations. You know Frank, you know Scott are gonna go and have these conversations. So don't just wipe it out. The walk-in clinic will definitely happen in the capacity that it's gonna happen. They did say it was gonna have to build. I don't think, yeah, we knew that it was gonna have to build when they were talking about, you know, two days a week, how many will come, things like that. We had a beautiful, out of a kind of crazy COVID situation blessing in a way that we were able to have these funds because, no disrespect to council, but I don't think council was ever gonna pay fully for a walk-in clinic. So let's just pause, allow them to talk about that. And you know more than anybody, this will come forward at a council meeting or a town hall of its own.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'd like to just take a moment and apologize because I was not, I personally, was not involved in conversations with the city and our commissioners, nor was I at the city council meetings when these motions were made. And my, in my role, at the point in which I came into the project, was more along the lines of when we were discussing architecture and things like that. And that's where terms such as urgent care started to come about. And we had conversations about primary care or walk-in services. I am not in any way opposed to providing walk-in services here. I'm not, I am not unwilling to continue to have conversations with the city about the services that we're providing here, especially since hearing the community's response and desire for walk-in related services. Our goal is to provide services to the community that they need and desire. And so I am willing to work with my staff and to work with the community to provide the services that you guys need. I think there has been maybe some level of disconnect in our communication or the words that we use. And I can honestly say I don't remember specifically saying the word "make an appointment" in any of our conversations, but that may not have been what our conversations were specifically about when I was meeting with the city. So.
Yeah, to your point, you were not involved in that part of it. We've only been discussing the building and the structure with you and moving forward on that. And we knew we couldn't call it an urgent care. And we knew we had to call it something for the various reasons because it wouldn't get through the Department of Health. So, so we did know that part. I, even I though, was very surprised that we were not gonna have, I, this is not gonna be Cedar Sinai Medical Center or the Mayo Clinic. We know that. It's gonna be a small rural clinic. But I was under the impression the primary purpose of that would be for walk-in patients. How we figure that out, whether we start that like with a one-day-a-week or a two-day-a-week thing or, you know, morning hours, I think we need to at least start there. Because I don't think, I think Gina's right. Unless we start that process, we won't know if it's ever gonna be successful. So, you know, I don't want you making commitments or promises you can't keep. And I don't want the, you know, the audience to do that as well. And I don't wanna tell people anything that's untrue. But let's just agree to, let's negotiate with the city to find some way to afford that from the very beginning, if we can do that.
Absolutely. I'm open to those discussions and providing services that they can use.
All right.
Thank you, Elizabeth, because I think there was a lot of miscommunication. So I appreciate you sharing that with us and that we will be working with everyone to get the services that we need here. So.
I, I've been going, sorry. I've been going to Aberdeen for a while since I got here. And one, my PCP or my doctor has, is training out there at Westport with the people there. And so when I needed to see him, they told me, you better think twice because if you go over there and get services at Westport, you belong to Westport. You cannot come back to Aberdeen to see him in Aberdeen. That's what I was told. And number two, while I was waiting in the doctor's office, I like to read things. On the board, there was a thing for labs, what you're concerned about. They were going, people are going to C Mar with the stipulation that when you go to C Mar, you go over there and pick up the labs, the results and stuff, and you bring it to Aberdeen. So are you guys gonna do that?
I mean, I'm not familiar with all of C Mar's services. So do they have an outpatient lab that they process things with? So ultimately, if we place an order for a lab and you, you can receive those services anywhere, whether that be at C Mar or at LabCorp or at the hospital. So if your preference is to receive those services somewhere else, you can bring the results. But ultimately, I can't commit right this moment to the clinic having outpatient lab draw services that would result at this location. In regards to your, to your other comment, my apologies because the staff should not say that to you. Ultimately, you can, you're not necessarily a patient of any one location or provider. There is obviously a preference that our patients continue with a primary care provider that sees you over the continuum because that's better patient care. But in the instance in which you're speaking of the primary care clinician that you see, he provides services in several locations. In conjunction, he is the main preceptor for our nurse practitioner fellowship program. So he can see you or have one of our other nurse practitioners provide services under his guidance or he would be present at the Aberdeen location. So there is, you know, it is, it is difficult when patients move from one different clinic location to another. But it doesn't mean that you are, you are only allowed to see that clinician in that location. Oftentimes in our clinics, you know, a nurse practitioner will see another nurse practitioner's patients or within the fellowship can be seen by multiple different clinicians. So. I'm sorry, what's that? The new EMR would allow us to see all of your records. Currently, within our outpatient clinic, we have the same record regardless of what location you go to.
I was just gonna say, there is a preference that once you choose somebody as your primary care, that you try to stick with that person. So even if that person is, say, practicing at a different location on a different day of the week, that you would be able to do that. But if you couldn't travel there, we have agreements among ourselves that we help try to cover each other's practices because everyone has a day off or they take a vacation. And so, but we don't want someone to say, okay, this week I'm gonna see Dr. A. And the next month, I'm gonna see Dr. B. And the next month after that, I'm gonna see Dr. C. I'm unhappy with Dr. C, so I'm gonna go back to Dr. A. I mean, we would prefer that people stay with the same one. But obviously, if that person is not available to you that day for that acute appointment, that they would, we would try to find coverage. That's why we have things like prompt care or others that have openings in their schedule.
Yeah, I want to thank you for being open to discussing this with our city administrator. As a member of the council, our city administrator and our mayor has kept us informed. And this has been going on for months. And we were under the impression that it was a walk-in clinic. When we voted for ARPA funds, every discussion that we've had, that is how it's been described. So I hope that we are able to come to some kind of compromise. I think you've heard, that's what our community wants. That's what our community has been told. So let's just make those discussions productive. I think that's it for questions.
I believe so. So I believe we'll conclude the meeting now. And then just give one more thing you wanted to say? No, okay, we can conclude this, we'll conclude the meeting now. And obviously, we have some discussions to have. I'm hopeful and optimistic we can make this work. At least, like I said, seven days a week is not gonna happen. It's not gonna be Cadillac services at first. I think we should just keep that expectation in mind. But the ultimate goal is for, at some point, within a given week, whether it's mornings, whether it's afternoons, whether it's Wednesdays and Fridays to start, whatever, that people that have local problems can go in. Because I don't think we can grow it unless we start with that as well. So, all right. So thank you, everyone. I thank you all for coming here tonight. Appreciate it.